The state holds a lot of licenses for these businesses if they're corporations. If they're licensed under special trade boards like contractors, or beauticians, or dentists, optometrists, you know, things like that. State health boards, things like that is where that is. I'm not.
So for example, you're licensed through the state, a beautician, bar shop, they're the only group who can really fill the pinch?
They could fill the, what I'm saying is they could fill the pinch whether the city decides to enforce it or not. If the state's enforcing it, they could be fined or have their license suspended whether the city does anything. That's on the state level with that.
Okay, let me ask, for private, Pastor Pat Stork, for private, do you have any gaming license from the state? So if a undercover guy walks into establishment and sees a guy playing with gaming without a mask on, it could?
It could. I believe Pat's also licensed with the, you have that health license? That's a staple.
So the man, the guy says, I have health problems. I got health problems. I'm not wearing a mask, so I can't sit there and play the machine. And in my opinion, if masks work so well, why didn't they put them on all the inmates instead?
Let me be clear, this is not a debate on whether or not masks work. This is not a debate on that. This is a debate, this is a, this is just a report on what the state is mandating, and what the state can do about it, and what the city's act is gonna be.
The way I see it, the state also mandated that you can't meet with groups of 50 or more people still doing it. They're not being punished, so roll the dice and see what happens.
Well, and it's easy enough for us to say, well, the dice, when it's not a license with the state that's on the line. So I think everybody's gonna have to make that decision on that. And the city will respond to, you know. I would like to petition the state just because I want to help these businesses now as much as possible. I don't want to go rogue and say, hey, you know, it is what it is. If we had a significant rise in cases, then, then we can take the appropriate steps. I think my client is doing the right thing and doing very well at it, and we should have a little bit of deal with it. I guess, all I'm saying. Well, I think the best, the best thing to do then would be to craft a letter, if that's the council's wish, and send it to the league committee through the people committee. There's, they're, they're the group who seems to have the most, if any, pull with the state at the moment on that. That's who the governor calls when they're doing this. That's who's working on these phases of, these phased openings and these mandates.
Roll these mandates, we're getting a lot of, we don't get this whatsoever. Especially if the rule is coming out with the Marching of California, which shouldn't control the NPA California. A letter should be written through the governor to tell him that, hey, this is not California. We don't need those kind of rules.
Well, we'll, we'll take that into consideration. That's my report, and if the council wishes to have a special meeting, consider that. We'll take that under advisement then. With that, we'll move on to item six. The mayor will recess the regular city council meeting for a public hearing at 5:30 PM on the following topic, topics. Chairwoman Roberts McHenry, discussion only. Approval of second reading of ordinance 733 Bill 2020-5. Amending Title V, Section 3B-18. Canal regulations to require that the canal or breeder business license number be displayed in all advertising and purchase receipts. This is discussion only, it's a public hearing. If there are items, yes.
Many of the Spain will face two items. By policy, only breeder licenses.
So with that, we will take any public comments? Public discussion on side?
Mr. Mayor, Chairman Roberts McHenry, please give the move for the public to second position. As the editor of the local newspaper selects a legal print letter to the editor, all while soliciting comments from the public in large that discriminates against certain people. The paper solicits classified ads, the night paper ads back on April 7th, 2020.
George, this is not in real good regards to the canal regulations. It's about the amendment of the canal regulations. It's about the amendment of the canal regulations, please. Would stay within that parameter.
Okay. I wanna speak against that. I reported that Keith Carson has horses, sometimes cows, sometimes a split, uh, donkeys within the city limits, and no citations have been written to date. Stop the selective enforcement. She needs to go. I wanna show you another picture that I gave, or I took recently. Horses across the street from me, Mr. Mayor. I told them, I'm not gonna.
Again, this is about the canal reg, breeder business license. Please keep it in that parameter.
Try enforcing what you have. No more rules and regulations, unless you play it straight. You're not doing it. You have a person that's selectively enforcing the law, and it needs to stop. That one just needs to go away from some of that chairman. Thank you.
I have a question at this time. One of our members.
Sure, discussion.
Kurt, your followers' property wasn't mine.
Ernie, this has gotta be, this has gotta be related, related to the canal.
Oh, what is coming?
Not to his comments, because his comments weren't related to the item. It has to be related to the canal.
It has, he managed to, that is not being chairman, not wanting to. It's in the column, he don't fly on the Jersey to the city's rule. Okay?
Better check the city.
Thank you, George. Any other discussion?
You've been wrong before, you're wrong again now.
George.
Please, can I have any further discussion on the canal item? Hearing none, I will move on to item seven, discussion, discussion, possible action. Items pertaining to the public hearing. Item one, Chairwoman Roberts McHenry, discussion for possible action. Approval of second reading of ordinance 733 Bill 2020-5. Amending Title V, Section 3B-18. Canal regulations to require that the canal or breeder business license number be displayed in all advertising and purchase receipts. I will entertain a motion on side.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Our master court. We'll let Michelle go with the second on that one. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, and noting Councilman Spears' abstention, I will call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing so ordered, thank you. We'll go on to item eight, item for discussion, possible action only of the U.A. City Council consent agenda. We've got minutes from May 28th, 2020, and we have bills from June 10th, 2020. I will entertain a motion to approve both.
I have one question on the bill for May 28th.
Okay.
Page four of four, some public comment.
You mean minutes?
I'm sorry?
You mean minutes of the bill?
I'm sorry, bill, I mean minutes. I got a question on the bill too. It's on the minutes, page four of four. Down in the public comment. Reading birth for curing, the sewer problem?
Yes, that's correct. That's correct.
Or that's the same as, I guess, curing, like I cure me. Is this, fix the problem, or that?
Yes.
Okay, that'd work, that'd work, that's my opinion.
You have a question about the bill, Stephen?
Yeah, I just, this comment, I've, I've been watching our fuel expenses, and the fire department has done an outstanding job by using probably 98% of the fuel from the county distribution center out there, and saving a lot of money. It's, I could commend them on that. It's sort of out of their way, but it's saving some serious dollars.
This is, this is the minute. Correction on part of these minutes, the second page I got today.
Yes.
Remember, we moved the, approved that and approved the deep correction.
Yes.
Is there any other questions, or entertain a motion for both items?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Full record.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing so ordered, we move on to the deal of business. Mayor Robertson, discussion for possible action. Approval of support letter in behalf of Robinson, the Benham Mining Company's proposed mine life extension to be submitted to the Bureau of Land Management's environmental impact statement and proposed resource management plan amendment. Do you have a graph there? It certainly opened to any adjustments the council would like to make. And if there are none, I will entertain a motion.
You want to approve?
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing so ordered, we move on to seat to business. Mayor Robertson, discussion for possible action. Approval of mutual modification of interlocal agreement for police protection from the city of U.A. and Whitecomb County. You've all had a chance to review that, are there any questions on this?
I just got the comment. When I first read this, I had quite a discussion with the attorney on it. And I read it, I read it, read it, and basically it sort of undermined me. My first issue I had was through June 30th, 2023. I was thinking, I don't wanna go in on these low involved contracts. It's just a continuation of this. Then, you know, it said, if the county purchases vehicles, including patrol cars, I thought, what we're trying to do, vehicles, I thought we're going after patrol cars. But I understand that it might be the vehicles go out to the prison and get meals. But the key thing that's, that I personally approve this with is the fact that it says in the, in the payment fourth sentence there, purchase of such vehicles if so desired by the city. That, to me, is the key thing. We're not tied into this. If the city treasurer see we're financially available to do another source of the way that we're this is being proposed, we can do that. We may not have to, we may have funds, it'd be really nice to have funds to go a different way of where this money came from, out of capital improvements. But again, it's the wish of the city, if so desired by the city. If the county not telling us they have, that we have to buy them a vehicle. I didn't wanna, in my opinion, didn't wanna get our hands tied saying we have to purchase a vehicle.
In your discussions with the attorney, did she, did she feel like that was the way that was ordered?
Yeah, that's, that's the way I understood it. If the city so desired to buy vehicles this way, and the city treasurer and the city council says, no, we're not gonna do it, we're gonna do it, you know, we have a fund of police protection in another way, you know, the way we're doing it now. This is, this agreement is good for our general fund. That's all my comment.
Yeah, that's, that's how I explained it in terms of, yes, that's the intent. And if we wanna use the money to, to go towards the vehicles that the county's purchasing, it's up to us, it's our decision to do so or not.
Any other questions on this item? Hearing none, I'll call for the motions.
I'll make the approval.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing so ordered, item two, Mayor Robertson, discussion for possible action. Obtain appraisal for APN 001-474-30 as required for sale of real property for economic development under NRS 268.0632A. There is a piece of residential property in the Greenham Road that a developer has expressed interest in. To be able to dispose of this to them, we have to, according to any discussions with the attorney, have an appraisal done first. These appraisals run the name of $600 for a piece of residential property. What's that? Around that, yeah. Any, any questions or concerns on this item?
What do we do after that, put it up for like sale bid, or?
We have to put it up for accepting proposals from developers, at which point, after which, we can decide who's got the best proposal and sell it for that.
Couple comments I have on that. First of all, I think that the agenda item wasn't very transparent. You know, unless you know how to go look for these parcel numbers. I thought it would've been nice to stay south of the substation, this piece of Greenham Road, you know, for, for somebody, the normal layman who's got the agenda, could go look at it. And again, you know, a lot less money, up to $500, $500 or $600 for the appraisal than I bought. The city treasurer, I'd ask her, I know it's not in the budget, it probably was not in the budget, but at least stand the game, so brought them again.
Walked the long way around. Little trip on the tour.
Yep.
I guess my opinion on this is that what the cost is, what we get. We could put more money in our pocket than what it's in cost of, so there won't be money to augment if I needed it. Like I think we can absorb the cost of an appraisal if it's as low as what I'm told.
Okay, the mayor showed myself and Parks, uh, Public Works Director Craig, a drawing of that, that for BJ. There's a trapezoid looking section, maybe next to the road. You know, any new construction is gonna have curb and gutter. That side of the road does not have curb and gutter, I would think.
It does.
I mean sidewalks, right?
Oh, sidewalks.
Sidewalks. So that one section, if we, the 500 pound pit goes out, then there's this space there between that property and the road. And that, so we're gonna have just a weed patch there. The city's still owns it, you know, I mean, I don't think you can put another on, other than decorations. That's the only thing I, again, you know, like you mentioned, the individual's interested in buying it, but he doesn't know what the price is gonna be. $500 is very minor, but I just wonder about that piece right there. Is there any way to, they buy to get the whole?
I don't think it would be out of the question. It's definitely not a piece of land that anybody could build anything on, so. I, I would imagine keeping enough for the city's right away for a five-foot sidewalk and either mandating or selling the rest to the person who buys that. Wouldn't be out of the question.
So does that amend, or your motion on that parcel have to be changed to pick up that? Oh, maybe BJ, there you go, BJ, thank you.
What Councilman Allworth is talking about is that little sliver over there. That's a parcel that was actually split when the road went in there. And so it is a part of the parcel that's actually truly going toward it from the other side of the road. And so as a possible remedy to that, we could, you know, do a boundary adjustment. And we could come over here and adjust that out, so we eliminate that, incorporate it into one lot, and we could run that property on exactly where you say you would want it to sit back. Five foot, but he was excited, curb and gutter that's out there. And then it would be one parcel, not to have this little sliver of no man's land that would come back. It's just the city was to maintain, the weeds and everything else.
I think, I think that would work good, and then, or good idea, same subject with me, you just said it. But if that, the appraisal, does that person come through and look at any possible drainage issues? Or do we know, they look at that and say, you know?
The appraisal, that is the appraisal on the cost. I believe it would be after purchase, the developer purchasing the property to acquaint himself with the issue of the property.
Okay, Bernie, go on, obviously.
Also, that, that's residential property.
Residential property, yes.
Sidewalks, mine has to be three foot, you have to have.
Well, I don't think we require sidewalks to be placed, we require curb and gutter to be placed. The curb and gutter is required, that's the requirement on sidewalks.
BJ, is that for a reason? We're responsible for building that base way down, and that guy's property up there in that big hole. Is that a potential real risk? Because we're the ones that built that up, and it's up to his backyard, and he's already complaining about that, so.
That's a situation where, you know, when the mayor come and asked me if that law was available for sewer, it just happened to be by, we're not there with our public court supervisor, and looked at what you're referring to. And there is, when that law was viable, it did kind of block some drainage coming out of the neighbor yard there. And so what we went and looked at was options that could come in and possibly repair that. You know, one way we could repair that, we could come and cut a small drainage along the backside of the city's current lot to get that water continue to flow down naturally. Our, you know, the other suggestion, in my opinion, is to possibly talk to that adjacent landlord, because he himself, kind of, it's just a hole in his backyard. Then if the city was willing to maybe bring some topsoil or something in there, you could level that up, break it in, and go from basically about two feet to nothing. So from me to you, you fill it in from two feet to nothing, and then that water naturally flow out of there.
That, that hole is actually deeper than the half of the road. High pass around there, it's, so you'd have to make the water on that hill somewhere for to raise it up high enough for it to come out of that hole. That hole is six foot deep, at least.
It's not, we can survey it, so that's why, what I'm saying is two. You know, I think you're, you're looking down the hillside, you're looking more.
How many got into it?
Oh, we went totally, that's where the people come back in here, so it's, it's two, maybe two and a half feet.
The goal, the goal wouldn't be to get to the water to drain right out to, you know, road. It would be to get it to drain out of there.
I know that would be, because this guy has this next door to it. We would have created that, that could be a potential problem for us, for the city who had that. But if he said maybe we could raise that up, we had to have his permission too, but wouldn't want to make that mess.
It, it, you know, those, those are the two easy options. And then you're one, work with him, we could level off his, because he's got plenty of. He would easily be able to be filled in and fixed by doing, putting topsoil into his, if that was something that was satisfying to him. If that was not satisfying to him, we could come back in and create this little swell, and it would run into the toe of that existing hillside coming off of that alley right there.
Okay, that'd be all over expense, but there goes some of the net on the scene.
Yes, that would be something where, you know, my discussion to the public supervisor was, if that's what it came down to, the city fixing this swell on their side, we could do a little bit of, you know, our city equipment.
BJ, you need to speak up.
Oh, I can hear myself today.
That's the problem. Jeez.
You're just trying to cause grief.
What's that?
You're just trying to cause grief to him.
No, the grief is I can't hear you. You know what the law says. That's your decision.
Any other questions for the city attorney?
I'll make the motion to get it praised, and it's like, we'll work it in the end, and see how it shakes out.
Make sure we get some better definitions of any other extent of that.
I'll take responsibility for that, George. You have the terminology.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion on this item? All in favor? Any opposed? Hearing so ordered, item three, Mayor Robertson, discussion for possible action. Review of eligible expenditures under the CARES Act and direction for the use of $729,204 distributed to the city. What the council has here is, at my request, the fire departments put together some possible things they could use that would qualify for this funding. The city staff has been putting things together as well that we could use to spend this on. We've been working with, who we sent that to? Kurt Ingelhart of Senator Cortez Masto's office, and Wesley Harper of the League of Cities for their opinions on whether those expenditures would be approved or not. They have yet to get back to us, but they're looking at it. This was kind of a general discussion from the council, if they had any ideas on how we could make use of that.
I think, I think they're all great at this. I've, I've read this thing five or six times, and I can't really see where, other than that one page, you know, for future, page six, you know. Status of temporary public medical facilities and so forth. I don't, because why I'm reading it is if something happened during the timeframe, we could be reading first. But I'm all set for setting it forward. I would like to command the fire department on the portable shelter. I would think they should add that some kind of portable generator system. If they have to set it up and stuff don't feel, you know, it's a long way to running extension cord. That would be one addition I put on, and I think it's a great idea, and I like the idea that they're gonna get a trailer to haul this stuff in. So if it happens in Baker, we can take it over there, wherever it's at. That's the one thing I think is missing, is they need some kind of portable generator system.
And keep in mind, we have until December, any users send this money back, so.
So basically, we're sending this off, bringing it to review and say, yeah. If they say, yeah, that's our blessing, we can roll over.
If they say, well, I don't think we're gonna get a resounding, you're absolutely, you know, good with this. They're gonna say, yeah, that's kind of the same way we're reading it, and I think that's the best we can hope for. I would just kind of like to get a second opinion from them, make sure we're reading it the same way it's intended. If that's the case, I mean, we can table this until we get some information back from those parties who sent it off to for review, or if the council has, would like some more time to, to kind of come up with some of their ideas, if other things they'd like considered, and if we can do that as well, however they want to do that, so.
Kind of like to see table, but I also want to, what, what can we do for our staff on this portion of the, finding out?
Well, city clerk Lee has done the most research there. If you'd like to kind of mention what staff expenditures we could possibly use on this.
We could, um, talk about it.
Well, you know, the thing, that's the black and white in the guidance from the treasury office, the U.S. Treasury office, is that public safety employees' payroll is an eligible expense.
And that would help us tremendously, there's our fire department.
The, the hope is that we can use this funding to bring our staffing able to back up the regular. And as soon as we get some, some information back from that, we will do it as soon as we can. Any other questions or comments from the council on it? Hearing none, I'll call for a motion to table or. I'll move to table. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Perfect. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item will be tabled until next meeting. Discussion for possible action, run item four. Approval to add city treasurer trust as a signatory on all city of U.A. bank accounts for online transfer purposes only. I understand that the treasury needs some ability to transfer funds between bank accounts. Is that right?
Yes, and actually, I'm gonna, I, I, I'm not gonna be, I'm gonna request not to be added to the main card itself. What we decided to come up with is, and I, this will be approved by the auditors, is a system where I'm gonna recommend transfers by any transfers within funds, and Jennifer will sign up on it as a signature to the accounts. And that way, it's a two, a system where I'm recommending that she's signing off on it, and then I'll do the transfers, all online, it's just basically for our money. The only one that I absolutely have to have my name on is the trustee of the Land Bill, motion post closure account.
So you would like the motion to be, to be a signatory for just that account?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions of the treasurer on this item?
It says, oh, here, I'm running for all of the city, so that power, they.
We can amend, we can amend the, the item to, to read as.
I will entertain a motion then, with that request.
Full.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing so ordered, we'll move on to item five.
At this time, I need to obtain this item as well, and from my daughter, Tina Furchetti, the LP insurance.
So, councilmember, city clerk, lead, Nevada Public Agency Insurance Pool representative, NP AIP, executive director Wayne Carlson, Tina Furchetti of LP Insurance Services. Discussion for possible action, acceptance of renewal proposal from the Nevada Public Agency Insurance Pool, and approval for payment in the amount of $202,243 from fiscal year 2020-2020-21. Funds to be paid in equal share from each of the covered funds. Do we have somebody on the phone for this?
We have Wayne and Tina, are you there?
I am. This is, uh, I'm here as chief of operations, officer, in place of my colleagues.
Oh, okay.
Are there any questions for other?
I'm pleased to have that presentation.
Oh, presentations?
Yes.
All right, well, then go ahead with your presentations, please.
Okay, again, I'm Tina Furchetti with LP Insurance Services. And I believe you all had, have two of the, the packets that I eat out, um, the day of the month to gentrify. But I'd just do it with you, and if you have a suspension, you might have agents or splitters, we have a lot to chat about it. And then Mike will talk to you a little bit more about this, because the NP AIP, this rule is null.
Okay.
The, the packet that you have should be the, the public agency insurance pool member coverage covering. The third page in actually just starts with the coverage, in summary, the coverage isn't deductible. I don't, I don't, I don't know if I can read it too, but I think it'd be nice if we just kind of glance over it. Is there any questions about any of these coverages that we just have done tonight? The, the proposal that you gave about 8/1/2020 is your 7500, and the first limits for property, and the subsection, in addition, property coverage, will look at. The following page shows your liability coverage and limits. It shows your limit for event, and all the limits will look at. The public security coverage on that page, along with environmental liability coverage limits that are included for you. And then off of that coverage.
I have a question. I believe Pastor Walworth has a question, Tina.
I can't, this is Jim Allworth, the question. How you doing? On, on environmental.
Thank you.
Good. On the environmental liability coverage, it's in coverage C, emergency response expense. Can you tell me what that is? And what that covers?
What, the emergency response extended?
Yeah. Environmental.
Right, by my, for the emergency response, does that be, in the instance, if you had a, had to communicate with breaking our company right now for? had the need to have a breaking or a company right now for, need for specialized creepy, you know, idea.